Do we start with the flag salute and then go to the protocols?
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
In closed session, we met and there was no, no decisions were, were made or anything. So we just discussed the stuff that's on the agenda. Moving from there, we'll go to the board meeting protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Hugh. I will go ahead and go over our board meeting protocol before we get, we begin tonight. Our session is being recorded. It's open to the public and it's also being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comment, public comments are three minutes per agenda item and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item for 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make public comment via Zoom teleconference, notify the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom or by using the raised hand feature in Zoom during the agenda item to be addressed and you will be identified by your display name in Zoom when called upon to speak. To make public comment in person, please complete the public comment form including the item you would like to address and give that to our board meeting, board assistant, Ms. Box, and those are at the door there. An email public comment can be emailed to the superintendent 24 hours before our meeting. We did not receive public comment for this meeting tonight via email and the public comments would be posted to our website and limited to 450 words. For board vote and connectivity, each motion will be followed by a roll call vote per action item. And should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes. We do not have a board member with us tonight via Zoom. Trustee Casey Reboi is not here tonight. And regular board meetings shall be adjourned by 10:30 PM.
Thank you for that. Moving on, we go to item E, recognition. Donna Mayo Whitlock, Educational Services Director.
Okay, well, I will start this. We've been celebrating Donna during the month of June and this is our, our kind of our final opportunity to celebrate her accomplishments and everything she's done for our district. Ms. Donna Mayo Whitlock, she has served in our district for 31 years. She's been a teacher, bilingual resource teacher, a principal coordinator and director of educational services. She's been instrumental in developing and supporting Fair Sight Preschool and Readiness Center. I've joked that we need to find a place to put her name. Dr. Karen Shower does have her name there and somehow I think we need to get Donna's name there as well. Bilingual education has been her passion and she has been a great support to our English learner families. Donna has also supported multiple grants over the years. Most, a lot of those grants have really built Fair Sight up to what it is now. And Donna has been instrumental in starting the dual language immersion program. And so I think that was a big reason why she stayed with us this last year so she could see that off and running and it's what a great start it is and, and expanding next year to Valley Oaks as well. She's been extremely dedicated and compassionate about her work in the district and community. I don't know if I've ever worked with anybody so compassionate as Donna, especially when it, it comes to serving our, our English learners in the district and our, our families that, that really need us. And we're very fortunate. She's chose our community of Galt to, to be here for 30 plus years, Donna. I've really enjoyed working with you in many different capacities over the 20 plus years that I've been in the district with you and we will definitely miss you, but we will not forget everything you've done for us and our students, families and staff. Mm-hmm. Yes. And we invited Dr. Karen Shower, retired superintendent, because Dr. Shower were obviously worked with Donna for many years and appointed to her as the director of educational services and just knows her leadership and her strength and commitment to the community. And I was hoping Dr. Shower might say something for Donna. Yes, please, please Karen.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Yant and leaders that are here tonight. It, it just is wonderful to see all of you and I'm, I'm so happy to be able to, to say this in person this evening. Donna Mayo Whitlock, your leadership has been phenomenal and as Superintendent Yant was saying, this progression of leadership over 31 years, an amazing career, an amazing career. When I think of, of you, I think of a thoughtful leader with this powerful balance of head, heart and hand. And so I'd like to just highlight a few things in each of those areas. When it comes to head and leadership, there's no one that I can think of that is so strategic, so strategic. When I served as superintendent and before, there are things that would come up, initiatives, state initiatives, local initiatives and being able to talk to you about strategy. Just it meant so much to me, you're about, with your availability that way. But there's also strategy as Superintendent Yant has shared with the many, many programs that you have developed from scratch or taken to new levels, whether they had been with the exemplary pre-kindergarten program, strategy program design around that to family literacy efforts, LCA Low Program, ACES, which is now the after-school program at all of the schools, your strategic, strategic mind has just made such a difference, your head. But again, your heart, you have the heart, the leadership heart of both a lion and a horse. And I say the lion, I say the lion because at the district level, very difficult, very difficult decisions and initiatives come through. And as the director of educational services, there are hard, hard student matters that you give your heart and make hard decisions and then you have the courage to make those decisions work or hear the feedback and own those decisions. The heart of a horse, I think of, well, Donna, you have cupcakes with a horse, horses on it. The horses, they do have hugest, huge hearts and you have the hugest heart I've ever in my over 40 years in education of anyone I've ever known. But a horse has tremendous try. And I'll tell you, Mrs. Donna, Ms. Donna Mayo Whitlock, your try is amazing. You don't give up. You don't give up. And when others, when I would hit the wall through the years, just running out of steam, you just, what can I do? How's it going? So I want to share just the tremendous heart that you have. And then the last, so we have the head, the heart and the hands. Because these initiatives, millions of dollars worth of grants that you've been a part of or written or people, organizations such as McClatchy have reached out to you because of your track record and, and the districts as well. Just what you did with your hands because you make things work. You don't just have the idea or the strategy or the compassion. You make things work and a leader has to do that. So I wish you the best in your retirement and I just thank you for the opportunity to have worked with you and to be here. Superintendent Yant, thank you for asking me to be here tonight and board members, everyone, everyone looks so great. Congratulations, Donna.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Karen. I really appreciate that.
Get a picture and we'll send it to the Galt Herald. Let's get the three of us a picture back here with the board. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. 1991, when Cleo and I started our journey together, I came down from Chico, Yeh Chico State, Lois is a fellow graduate. But I chose Galt because I wanted to make a difference and I wanted to make a difference in a small community. I come from Linden and when I moved back down. And from my first year in the district, I, I, I worked with, with Dr. Karen Shower. And she has for 31 years been my mentor. And I just, you know, as a mentor and as a friend and a leader that gave me the courage to step out, to step out and take a chance. My other mentor is, was Judy Bullard, who was my principal and also as our curriculum director. But can you imagine what anyone can accomplish working with, with those two women as leaders in our school district? And I mean, if you remember both of those leaders. I just, you know, wanted to recognize our principals also because at the district level, becoming a director, you're only as good as your team and, and the team at our district level and, and working with these amazing principals with the last few years, I have so appreciated just your patience, collaboration. I hope my phone doesn't accidentally pocket dial you guys, but knowing that, I mean, it's like a 24-hour a day job many times and knowing that I could at any time pick up the phone and call any of you and our system principals. It's meant a lot to me. But it's been quite a journey and I think that I would like to be remembered as that como le puedo servir? How can I serve you? And that's what I've tried to do for my 31 years in the district is serve our families and serve our staff. Anyway, thank you so much and I appreciate it. And again, thank you, Dr. Shower. I appreciate the kind words and hopefully we'll be galloping soon. I know that I'm really looking forward to giving back to our community and I'm really hoping that I'll have the opportunity to work with, with Karen and hopefully revive our therapeutic writing program. We have a beautiful arena out at McCaffrey, so you'll be seeing me out there with my horse. But thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Donna.
Dr. Shower, thank you very much. You, I knew you would be the, the person that could really give us the scope of what Donna's work has been and it, yeah, thank you so much for, for coming. Let me move on. Okay, we'll move on. No public comment?
No, there are no public comments, Mr. Hable.
All right, thank you. Move on to G, reports. LCAP goal number one.
We will start with our director of curriculum, Claudia Del Toro Anguiano, on our, our data from third trimester.
Thank you. I want to start by saying that a while ago I was watching a video on the importance of reading. And the key takeaway of that video really stuck with me for years and the, the person in the video said, "Parents will forgive us for just about anything as educators. They'll forgive us for being late with papers. They'll forgive us for not sending home whatever was required." But she said, "Parents will never forgive us if we don't teach their children how to read." So that is how important our job is. That every child that comes to our system should leave third grade reading at or above grade level. What comes after that, whether it's critical thinking and being resourceful, that's something that we can teach and support. But the foundation has to be there and they have to leave third grade at grade level or above. So keep that in mind as you see the first set of data. So the, can we project it? Thank you, Kawaii. So the first data set that we will look at is the district reading assessment. The LCAP goal is to increase the scores by 10% each year. The data set that you see here represents the percent of kinder through third grade students who met the, who met all the district benchmarks. What you see here is spring to spring. So if you look at the district scores, spring of 22, 54% of the children met all the district benchmarks. This past spring, spring of 23, 66% of them met all the benchmarks, therefore reaching that 10% target. You have that same information by school. For the schools that indicate no, keep in mind that it is important to always look at growth. So we're looking at Marengo. Marengo grew. They just didn't meet the, the 10% target that we were expected. The same for River Oaks, you see growth. Valley, Lake and Greer met the 10% benchmark. The second data set that you see there are, is the same data by cohorts, by student groups. And the reason we look at student groups is because it, it gives you a different perspective on how children are moving as groups. For example, if you take a look at second grade, if we look at the scores just across the board, second grade, spring of 2022, 53% of them met all the benchmarks. This past spring, second grade, 62%, they did not meet that 10% target. But when you look at the student group, take a look at second grade last year, third grade this year. You're looking at that same student group performing at a 53% last year and at 70% this year. So we look at student groups because we want to see the growth made by this or similar, because it can't be a one-to-one cohort. But we want to look generally at each student group. We want to look at schools overall progress. Are they moving? Which is what we want to see. They meet the target. But that cohort information is critical in deciding, you know, what do we do next? What worked, what didn't? And all of the principals here submitted a, anywhere between a five to almost a 10-page reflection report on different data sets, everything from, "Do you know who are the students that score in the lowest band in MAP? Do you know who these students are? How was their attendance? Did they go through the MTSS process?" So this data set that you see here is by school, by grade level, but they have it by individual student. Do you have any questions on that before we go to the map? Data? Okay, so on the next page, this data represents the first and second grade students who took MAP at the end of the year. The reason you don't see third through eighth, that's because they took S-Back. So we will look at S-Back scores when we come back in August. So first and second grade students took MAP. Key question here is, did we grow by that 5%, which is the LCAP target? Again, if you look at our district in the area of math, first line, spring of 22, 41% reached that 60th percentile that we're wanting to see in MAP. Spring of 23, MAP, MAP, 47%. So yes, they met that 5% target. Again, when you look at schools that indicate a no, for math, let's take at Lake Canyon, 46 to 48, no, they didn't reach that 5%, but did they grow? Yes, they did. The same for Greer. If you take a look at reading, 43 to 47. Did they grow? No, they were close. I'm sorry, did they meet the target? No, but did they grow? Yes. So it's always important that we don't just look at status, that we look at status and growth. We want the entire system moving forward. Again, we can spend hours. Data is probably one of my favorite subjects. I could probably speak to you about numbers and data for hours. I will not do that this evening. But I, this gives you a pretty good idea of, of how we are moving in the area of reading, how we're moving in the area of reading and MAP for first and second grade. And again, we'll bring you data on ELA and MAP or S-Back grades three to eight when we come back. Any questions, any comments?
So if I understand correctly, there's sort of like an, looking at possible improvements, there's like an overall plan or, you know, a strategy. And then is it also looking at individual students as well that maybe didn't meet? Is that what I heard?
Yes, we look at individual students. We look at individual grade levels. We consider the expertise of the teachers. Are they new teachers? Are they, are the new teachers to us? We look at what kind of professional development we provided. Did it make a difference? We look at the, the target, the PTSDAs, the, the target, the improvement cycles that we've talked to you about. We talked to our admin team about that. We talked about, okay, the, for the grade levels that showed growth, what was their target in that improvement plan? Did it make a difference? So the, the purpose of, of the data set says, yes, we look at the numbers, but really we go much, much deeper. It's beyond the numbers. The numbers just give you a glimpse of, of how it looks in this format. But we spend hours, days talking about what work can it be replicated at a different school? Can it be changed? What didn't work? What needs, what do we need to stop doing? Because that's also important that we don't do something that didn't give us the results that we were expecting. Generally speaking, as I shared with you yesterday, it appears that children that aren't growing, they're not growing because they're not coming to school. And if they don't come to school, then there's very little we can do. What's that saying? If, if they don't come, if, yeah, if they don't come, we can't reach them. So it's important that that we really focus on, on chronic absenteeism. And all of your administrative team here made a comment about that because I would say 80% of the children again that aren't growing, it's because of attendance. Admin, is there anything else that we'd like to add as far as your reflection, not just with these data sets, but in general?
Okay. Thank you very much. That was helpful.
On the national news, we showed up today, I didn't get a chance to see the, the report, but it's, it was like the whole nation was not doing well in math and reading. So it's good to see our district is, but I didn't get a chance to see the, listen to the, the report, but they were, they were made the big announcement. That was the thing going into the commercial, what they had said, so.
Yes, we're not quite where we were pre-COVID, but we're getting there. Growth is happening. So it's a lot of growth by the end of this, this third trimester. So staff are doing a great job. Administrators are doing a great job leading their teachers and classified staff. And I think it will just continue to improve, especially if we can focus on attendance. And we have our administrators and social workers and a couple of teachers at each school site that are attending a chronic absenteeism summit, a, a two-day summit. Some staff are going for two days, some just one through San Joaquin Office of Education. And just continuing to make that a focus this next year.
Moving on to the item number two there, the California School Dashboard Local Performance Indicators.
Thank you. So we typically bring to you the local performance indicator rankings at the beginning of each school year. This year, we are required to bring the local performance rankings as part of the LCAP and the LCFS, LCFF process. These local indicators are part of the California School Dashboard. And I'm sure you've heard that before. The dashboard typically becomes public sometime in the fall. Both state and local indicators provide the public with information about how our district and our schools are doing in regards to meeting the needs of all students based on a concise set of measures. The metrics used to identify progress are based on data from this previous school year. These priorities are areas where data is not collected by the state. Those are the ones you see. You probably noticed that you don't see priority four and priority five. That's because that's data that the state collects. So this is data that we collect at a local level. And the purpose for this report is to let you know this is how we ranked on each of those performance measures. So priority one, basic services. Basic services means ensuring that all students have access to teachers who are fully credentialed, have access to materials and have a safe and properly maintained school. This information is found on page three and we show a ranking of met. Priority two, implementation of state standards. This priority ensures that all students are provided with academic content and materials that are aligned to the state standards. This is, information is found on pages four through six. If you take a look at page six, you will see that rural language now has a ranking of four. In the past, we showed a one. We show a four, full implementation, because we now offer Spanish as an exploratory at McCaffrey. So for priority two, we will also show a ranking of met. Priority three, parental involvement. This relates to our efforts to seek parent input in decision-making and Donna will share more.
The parent family engagement, it reflects, like Cleo had said, on our efforts to build relationships between school staff, families and foster partnerships and for input and decision-making. The metrics that we use to, to assess would be the California, the Cal School Survey that we give our staff and our families. We also look at, we look at our advisory committee meetings. We meet almost monthly with our advisory committee meetings. We gather their feedback. We look at our attendance. And in the area of priority three, building relationships, partnerships and seeking input, we do feel after looking at our, at our data that we have met the ranking of, met, the ranking is met for the priority three area. Priority six is school climate and that's the perceptions. And this is really focused on our students' perceptions of school safety and connectedness. And the metric that we use for that is the Cal School Survey. And we've been giving it annually to grades five through eight. And we look at how we are, are, that how we look at what students are, their feelings of safety and connectedness in school. Some of the positives for priority six were noted. Students feel that we have high expectations. They feel safe at school. That they have a high academic motivation and they feel that they're a caring adults. I did want to point out one concern that's been there for, actually since COVID. It's that 32% of our seventh graders, 26% of our eighth graders have experienced chronic sadness, hopelessness, hopelessness in the past 12 months. And I just bring that to your attention just to, just again, to highlight the importance of our mental health and the social, emotional learning opportunities that our kids have. And at middle school, we are now staffed, continue to be staffed with two school counselors and we'll have a mental health clinician also. But I think it's really important not only to celebrate the positives, to really know where, you know, is where we still need to grow, especially in the area for our students.
And then priority seven, course access. This priority ensures that all students have access to all subject areas that prepares them for college and careers regardless of what school they attend or where they live. This information is found on pages 14 and 15 and we show a ranking of met. The completion of this report and by reporting the district's findings to the governing board and the public, our district is considered to have met the standard set by the California Department of Education for these local indicators. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Number three, the 2223 Fair Sight State Preschool Program Self-Evaluation.
Wonderful. This is an annual self-evaluation that we bring to you each year. It's required by the California State Preschool Program. And we have Cooljeet Nijar, the principal at, at Fair Sight and she has a PowerPoint to share with you.
Good evening. This is the first time I've put heels on, so I feel like I'm actually.
So as Donna mentioned, we bring this to you annually. I mean, it's an annual review as is required by our state preschool contract. I am going to present just highlights tonight, but do know we do present, we do provide CDE documentation of the review. And the review is broad and comprehensive, and it covers how families are selected to participate in the preschool program, eligibility requirements, how we determine that there's a need for a full day program. Are we assessing the correct fees and compliance, due process procedures? How we track attendance and report it to CDE? All parent education, what do our class ratios look like? Is there PD offered to our teachers? So it's pretty comprehensive. But I'm just going to kind of just highlight some things for you. So a couple of years ago, in collaboration with one of our grantees, JBMF, that's the James B. McClatchy Foundation, we with our parent input crafted this mission statement. And this really is our guiding, guides our work and how we implement anything at Fair Sight. And really, we were looking at what what constitutes a kinder readiness student. And really, our focus is around developing the whole child. So in addition to academics, we continue to develop language skills, social skills, emotional skills and the physical motor skills that any child moving on to kindergarten can be successful. As we've mentioned in previous board meetings, the funding sources are multiple and varied at Fair Sight. The biggest contributor is the California State Preschool Program, but we've also have funding sources from migrant education, the James B. McClatchy Foundation, Raising Quality Together, some supplemental and concentration from the district funds and then Title One. So it's a very braided system that we're able to keep our doors open. And this is for preschool. And so I I think it's really important that I wanted to show you the faces of those that are at Fair Sight Preschool. These are our preschool teachers. We have nine preschool teachers, six general education preschool classrooms and three special education preschool classes. We have three preschool speech therapists, two psychologists supporting, and then we have our readiness staff as well. So it definitely takes a village to get our kids ready for kindergarten. Oh, there it is. For our preschool program, we have four-year-olds. So we have approximately eighty-eight four-year-olds. We have three-year-olds, about fifty three-year-olds. Our SDC programs, approximately twenty-six students. We have two home visiting educators and they serve approximately forty families. These are families that they work with in hopes that we can get them enrolled in preschool. And as mentioned, we have three preschool speech therapists. And so we have thirty-nine families that come just to our campuses for speech. As we look to see what are our goals for any school year, we do go through the the cycle of continuous improvement. And while we don't have district reading assessments, the assessment tools that we use are more developmental in nature. And so we use the desired results for developmental profile. These are developmental skills in social, emotional, physical, cognitive, language. Also, we use the early childhood environmental rating skills. And this is a, sorry, whereas the develop, the desired results for developmental profile, this is an observational tool that teachers use and rate skills that that the children are demonstrating. They do this once in the fall, within sixty days of the beginning of the school year, and then again in the spring to document growth. The other rating scale is the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale. And this is a, we have our teachers go into each other's classrooms and we're looking for indicators of quality interactions. And this could be interactions with students with students, teachers with students, and then also interactions and or how the students use the material and spaces within the classroom. As a part of the state preschool requirements, we are required to send home a parent survey. And this survey asks families about just their general experience of the program at Fair Sight. And we did also, we have also generated district benchmark assessments, and this looks at more of those academic skills. Okay, so we kind of take all of this information to see where are our celebrations? And then where are our areas of continued growth? So our celebrations across the board in all of our preschool classrooms and and I can even say in our TK classrooms, areas that we we saw the the most percent of students passing or meeting benchmarks. We're in our district benchmarks with color recognition, shape recognition, pattern creation and name writing. So these are kind of those pre-academic skills. Using the teacher observational rating skills, the social emotional developmental areas were high. Teachers seeing that there was a lot of progress made with students in terms of their self-regulation, their self-management, their just coping strategies. And then in the the ECHERS, which is the final rating scale, the interactions amongst the students, the teachers, and then also how the students were interacting with the materials within the classroom. So these are definitely the areas that we were with strengths. So then we looked at what are some areas that we can focus on for this year? And so from the parent survey, an area that we will focus on or continue to focus on is communication. And here, we do use Class Dojo as our primary means of communication. But looking at how can we continue to email one-to-one contact with families to make sure that they are getting the communication that is being sent out? In the ECHERS, the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale, an area that came out as a focus, it's called learning activities. And essentially, it's those quote unquote, non-academic areas like art, music, dramatic play. And and the rating scale looks at during those activities, how are staff encouraging or developing language or vocabulary or expanding or extending upon what they're learning? And so that's an area that we will focus on for next year. And then from the teacher observational rating scales, the area of math. We're very fortunate to be partnered with, again, for the next year, with the Fresno County Office of Education with a math grant. And so some of our teachers are going through some professional development to bring back strategies and tools and coaching for our teachers on different math activities in the classroom. And then, is there any questions?
Thank you, Kuljeet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kuljeet.
Moving on to number four, summer services.
We'll start with Donna Whitlock on this one. Thank you, Donna.
You highlight some, well, the first thing I wanted to highlight is our leadership during the summer program. Leah Wheeler is serving as our summer school coordinator. A Gina Fuentes is our extended school year, extended school year coordinator. They are working together between River Oaks and Greer, Fair Sight and McCaffrey Middle School. And so they're just really, they they are, they're working together and they're doing a tremendous job. And then also Lori Jones, who is our new district coordinator for Expanded Learning. Her first summer, she's overseeing the Expanded Learning Program at at all seven schools. And then to mention that we have a hundred summer staff members, teachers and classified staff that have opted to work during the summer. And I and I also need to thank our twelve-month employees, our district office staff, our custodians who are just working overtime. Because you can see by the numbers on the the chart, we have five hundred and eighty-six students participating just in the summer school portion and ESY. And then in the GALT Expanded Learning, four hundred and forty-one students. And this is in our first year. And I'll tell you what, between Lori, Leah and Gina, just the coordination, it was, you probably heard from parents that we were sending out the little registration forms for summer school. Then they'd got the Expanded Learning Form. And, you know, I it all settled, though. It all settled. We had quite a nice waiting list and during the month of June. But I do believe that all families will have a chance to participate in Expanded Learning, which goes until July twenty-sixth. But it's, we're doing well, we're doing well. Do you have any questions about the summer program, social services? In this fall, this fall, Gina and Leah will bring you and probably Lori Jones, they'll bring you just a report on on the the services also.
Yeah, I was wondering, just from what you've seen so far, how much of the, like, if you could put a percentage on it, like, how much is, you know, are they trying to academically boost? And then how much is it kind of less structured for the kids? It is summer school. I think summer school might have a different feel, but I just, you know, I'm not sure.
You know, the the summer school portion runs from eight to twelve, and that's the one that's at, and it's at Greer and at River Oaks. Well, it's at the end, McCaffrey for sped, but that is really an academic focus. When we first started offering summer services, right after we came back from COVID, we offered it for almost the entire day, I think it was until two o'clock. And we really included a lot of social, emotional activities. But this year, summer school has been, we we looked at students, I think we used map testing, the reading scores, and we really focused on the students who were struggling in reading. So I would say that the first first part of the day for summer school, the majority of it is academic centered on math and language arts. The Expanded Learning Program is more enrichment. And although they they do touch on academics more in a fun way, it, I would say it have, it's more heavily focused on on the enrichment aspect. And then you will probably see in the coming years, and and it was going to be addressed a little bit when you were looking at, we were looking at our board policies, is that in the future, Expanded Learning during the summer will probably, really, the the focus on some academics will be, will be inserted because our funding for our summer school is going to be diminished. We're using one-time funds. So in the future, our Expanded Learning Summer Program will most likely, hopefully, will involve teachers who are wanting to pull small groups of students. So it's a balance for those. And we have many of our children who who start in the morning in summer school, and they had the first opportunity to stay until four, four-thirty in the afternoon because per hour, per our Expanded Learning of funding, we have to offer nine hours a day during the summer. So it's it's wonderful for families who are working during the summer. Thanks for the question.
Thank you, Donna.
Expanded?
We have one more quick report. Nicole's going to talk to us about the summer meals.
So every summer, my nutrition supervisor, Nick, they do the summer feeding program over at Fair Sight. And so he puts out a flyer and he puts it on the website and distributes it and runs that program every summer for the children eighteen years or younger in the whole community. On top of doing that, since we have had summer school with the one-time funds and we are now going to have JELL every summer as a requirement of their funding, his staff is doing breakfast, lunch and supper for every site, for JELL and for the summer school. And if you saw the numbers that Donna put out there of the attendance, they have really been hustling and bustling this summer and we're very appreciative for them volunteering, volunteering to work in the summer, just as our other staff have volunteered to work in the summer as well. It it really takes all of them to make this work. We had custodians volunteer this summer a lot more than last year. We are able to provide all those services. And so it's really important to have that support staff to be able to run the programs as well.
Thank you, Nicole. Lots of good things going on in the summer between academics, enrichment and meals. Stayin' busy.
Onto LCAP Goal Number Two, McCaffrey Shade Structure.
Thank you. I wanted to just highlight with the board that the shade structure at McCaffrey is finally done. It took a while, longer than we expected, but it is done. It is a beautiful shade structure with bleachers. It's a hundred and five feet long and with three sets of aluminum bleachers. It is on, I believe it's like the south side of the track. It's where the cement pad was poured for for spectators or for the bleachers. It takes up almost the the whole area. It's a, it's a good size. So we can definitely have multiple PE classes out there under the shade on the bleachers. And so we just wanted to share that it's a couple of pictures that it's done. It was approximately two hundred thousand dollars for the final completion of that project. And the funding source, we use the one-time federal funds, the ESER funds. And that was approved by the board about a year ago now, but we're just, we're finally done. So I wanted to share some pictures and you can definitely see it driving by as well. It's it's quite a structure.
Moving on, other reports, the CSBA Annual Conference.
So the annual conference this year for CSBA is in San Francisco. The dates are the same, normally the end of November, beginning of December. It's November thirtieth, December second. We provided some preliminary information about what what will be provided, some information on the guest speaker, one of the guest speakers. But I think as of now, I think we have all of our trustees that will be attending. I'll be attending as well. Ms. Bach will be attending some of the sessions, and we have reserved a spot or two for possibly a cabinet member or two to to attend as well. So we'll be represented well, and it's nice that it's closer, not in San Diego this year, although we love to go to San Diego too, but it's just a drive this year to San Francisco. And we will continue to give the board more information as they put more out about the workshops and the sessions.
Item number two, Review of April nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three, Overview of Funding School Facilities Report.
Okay, thank you. I will have Ms. Bach, we'll give her a second here to pull up the presentation. The board has seen this presentation. This was presented at our April nineteenth board meeting from Lori Renee Government Financial Services. She presented an overview of the district's bond measures and how a district may raise additional funds for facilities. And so to lead this discussion, I just want to highlight a few few slides. I would like to start with page five. That demonstrates the current debt the district has for for bonds. We have two bond measures that taxpayers are currently paying for. Measure W, which will be paid off in three years, and most recently, Measure K, which still has twenty-three years. Like to go to slide ten. This slide demonstrates the level of current bonds that we have out, and it also demonstrates the district bond capacity. So you can see that with Measure K, we still have outstanding to pay a little over eight million dollars. And Measure W, only two million that will be paid off in the next three years. And so at this time, with the current bonds that we have, the bonding capacity, the pinch potentially is a little over twenty-seven million dollars that the district could issue bonds if it were approved. So our bonding capacity, even with Measure W and Measure K, there's still twenty-seven million dollars available. Like to go to page sixteen. Like to go to page sixteen. This is just an overview of what the district could consider. For an additional geo bond at the general election in November of two thousand and twenty-four. A general obligation bond um. Is traditionally a two-thirds vote, but since twenty, sorry, since two thousand, it's now fifty-five percent voter approval, and this is what we had with measure K. Go to page twenty-one. So at this time, there's no, there's no action, but I would like direction from the board. If the district or if the board would like to consider, there's lots of things that would have to go into place. But consider a possible geo bond in November, two thousand and twenty-four. We would have to update our facility planning, which master plan, which is something we probably need to do regardless if we go out for a bond or not. Most recently, our facilities master plan was completed in two thousand and fifteen. And at that time, there was identified over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty million dollars of needs. And we, of course, received measure K and received twenty million, and we have received a few more million from state funds as well. I'd say maybe close to. In total, since two thousand and sixteen, maybe close to thirty million dollars in facility funds. And we've done a lot of work in the last few years, but of course, there's always still need, and so. We would need to update that. And then we also, if this is something the board would like to consider at this time. The next step would be to initiate a survey of the community. This is what we did with measure K. You survey your community to see if there's a, a support. If there, if it comes back positive that there's support, the board might choose to go forward with a, a bond election. Doesn't mean you have to. But if the survey comes back that it's not supportive at this time, we would recommend that we would not. Go out for a bond election in, in two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the clock is ticking. We're already almost in July. Um, so if this is something. That the board would like to consider, we do need to get going with consultants and firms to create the survey. We did a little research. A survey of our community would cost the district between about thirty to forty thousand dollars to do a survey, and so that is what. Um, you know, that's really the. The. I don't know, the, the loss, you could say, of, of potentially surveying the community for thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, and it come back that. It's just not favorable at that time, and that has happened before. Prior to measure K, a few years before measure K, we surveyed the community. And it came back that it wasn't favorable at that time, and we did not go out for a bond. And then two thousand and fifteen came around, we surveyed again, and it was much more positive, and of course. Measure K passed. And so um, you know, at this time, I wanted to just, you know, review what Lori Renee um. Presented to us, our financial stability. We've done a very good job with our, our consultants and our financial advisors paying off um, this debt. At great rates for the community. I think that we could um, publicize well what we have done with the funds. And definitely have a story to tell on, on the repayment, and that we've, we've saved taxpayers money over the years. Um, but it's kind of need to make a decision. Either, either we go, go forward with the survey to see. Or we can say just, we don't, we don't feel it's time right now and wait a couple of years. Because we could also go out for a bond in two thousand and twenty-six. You don't have to wait for an election year.
Question on the survey because.
Mm-hmm.
What's going into the survey that it costs? That just seems like a lot.
It is, yes, a consulting firm creates the survey for you. They get feedback from the board. They get feedback from parents, staff members, community. To even. Know what questions to ask. They're gonna ask all kinds of things on. What you would, if you would support a bond, what kinds of things would you support it for? What would you, how would you like to see the money spent? They're experts in how to word these things. That's also the fee to. Send out all of the information, all the registration, whether it's paper, whether it's electronic. Um, you know, working with the county and all the addresses, collecting all the information, presenting the data to you, then they would come and report the data at a board meeting. Um, it's, it's quite a process for the survey, and we paid, we've paid that in the past. It's, it's pretty much the going rate. The rate is dependent upon your community, the size of your community, both, both your enrollment in the district, and how many community members you would survey in Galt.
Oh, in the past survey. Because I know a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
Cloud surveys or complete surveys. I mean, how many did you actually get?
You know, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I do remember from the reports that they gave us, that. The sampling that they got, they felt it was a good amount of responses, enough for them to warrant, give us a percentage of. Was it favorable or not? So they have a ratio of. Say there's twenty-five thousand people in Galt, how many surveys they need to get back to say, to give their opinion. This is a go or this is a no. They would report all of that for us.
They do a lot of it over the phone?
I, I believe there was opportunities to go over the phone. Mm-hmm.
Ms. Skinner, could you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
What's the cost to go for a bond? Like, if we did go. We decided to go that route, and then we didn't get it. Is there a cost associated with just going for the bond?
There is. There's some costs associated to getting, to get on the ballot. Yes. Mm-hmm. And we would present all of that to the board. I mean, this right now is just preliminary. Do you want us to start doing the research on, on survey? Um, and there would be more reports coming to you on what the survey would look like, when it would go out, how it would go out. But if, if you're, if the board collectively is feeling like it's not the right time to even. Pursue the survey, then we just, we wouldn't do that at this time. But then, say the survey comes back, then they would present to us all of the cost. With the pros and cons of going forward with the survey and say it, or sorry, going forward with the bond and say it doesn't pass. We would know all of that. Before the board made an action on whether to go for, go forward.
I recall is when we said no to go for the bond. They, it was a, there was a lot of negative.
Mm-hmm.
Feedback. So we, we already kind of knew, you already kind of knew, like, oh, we're, we're gonna waste our time and our money. Even do this, because that company will come back with, with the, with the feedback. But we did go for it. It was, it was a whole lot better. Um, because you got that fifty-five percent. Line, so you already know they'll kind of report to you like, hey, you're, you've got like sixty-five. Percent people are, are in favor of your bond, then you feel a whole lot better about going for that. Yeah, so. That's what I recall.
Yes, you're absolutely right. The. And, and they will give you their. Their expert opinion, and they have all the data to support it. You know, you had ten thousand people that. Gave a response. You had sixty percent that were favorable. They would give us our, you know, and they give you data too, based on other counties and districts on. Why they would recommend to go for it or not, and, and then you, you really take their recommendation. If they tell you that it, it doesn't look favorable. It's probably not worth going out.
If I recall, the. Um, before we went for measure K, the one before, I think the, the company even said, we recommend you go for. For the bond. It does not.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and they even give you the success rate for how many districts or counties, cities that they've recommended, go for it, you know, go out for a bond, and if it passed or not. They, they would present the board with all of that.
When we have to decide? Or do we need to decide that? Or do we?
You know, we, we probably could wait another month or two. Um. But we are getting, I mean, there's a lot that happens if, if we need to do this. You start having. Monthly meetings at, at the school sites. You start bringing, you know. The consultants and the facilities master plan. We start going, going on that sooner than later. Um, so there's a, there's a lot of work involved.
Uh, myself, I definitely know, I think that we need to move forward with the, uh, facilities master plan. Because the one we have is eight years old. So going on nine, so I mean, I think we definitely need to, to update our facilities master plan.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody else, right? Yeah, um. Uh, now going for the bond, um. Now maybe that's something we, we could put on a, like a future agenda item. And we can just, uh, get some more information and, and discuss it more in depth. Because we can have some more. Um. But I think, uh, I mean. Out of one hundred and fifty million that we needed on our last master plan, we got thirty. I mean, the, the community can of, should have a good idea of how we spent that money and all the upgrades we did to our schools. So I mean, for me, uh. I mean, I don't think it would hurt to. Start looking.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Start getting the process going.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how the rest of you feel. I mean, I definitely think we, it definitely has to be a future agenda item.
Mm-hmm. I, the board could give direction for us to start working a little bit more closely before paying for anything, but we could put the, because you'd have to put the RFPs out. The request for proposals for a consulting firm to even perform the survey for you, and so if that's something that you're even considering. Probably need to start getting those RFPs out there. Um, doesn't mean you have to go, you know, go forward with it, and, and there's no harm in surveying the, the community, except there is a cost with it. There is a cost. I mean, it's, it's always a great idea to survey the community and get the feedback, regardless if we go out for the bond or not. Um, but again, there's a cost.
Do you recall, out of curiosity, what was the environmental trend between the first time and the second time on the measure K? Um, was it just the fifty-five percent that had changed, or was there other factors that led to that?
I think we were still coming out of the recession. Um. Right. It was still fifty-five percent because it's been fifty-five percent since two thousand. So I want to say we probably, it was two thousand and fifteen when we surveyed for measure K. I want to say maybe three, four years prior to that. Is when we surveyed and the, the feedback came back that it just financially, the community was not going to support it.
And what I really recall was that the, a lot of the buildings started really breaking down.
Yeah.
Uh, bathrooms were not working properly. Uh, Marengo, like the stuff was falling, literally bricks were falling off the building. So I think parents, it, it started seeing all that, and, and so when that discussion came, I, I definitely think that had a lot. To do with like the, the whole change of attitude about we need to do something to our schools.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what I recall.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to see if the, the, although they're totally not related, but the city's tax. If that would impact people's perception of this, those results.
Yeah. Because there is a new tax now.
Yes.
As well.
Are we good with, um, I think we're good with. Going forward with the facilities master plan.
Okay.
Did I get that updated? I, are we good with? The, with Lois going ahead and uh, reaching out and doing everything we can without paying money?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
No money yet. We'll just do a little more research still.
Alright. Thank you. Alright. Is there anything else to do with that report?
No, there's no, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we got a little directive there. Uh, we'll move on to uh, Routine Matters New Business, two-one-two-point-four-six-one. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar? Or do you want to go over some, uh, is there any, uh?
I do.
Retirements, but uh.
Yes.
Donations?
Yeah, I have a couple. There's a, a few highlights, two highlights on the human resources calendar, the consent calendar. There's uh, Gail Bruce, uh, is retiring after twenty years in the district. She's been a teacher tutor and a teacher on special assignment, E L D, English Language Development Support Teacher, and. Most recently, a visiting educator with us, supporting, supporting teachers. So we congratulate her and thank her for her twenty years of service. And then also on our consent calendar, we have Nicole Lorenz. Um, we want to congratulate her. She's received a promotional opportunity. She's going back to the San Joaquin, San Joaquin County of Office of Education and. As a director there is in business, and so we're very thankful that she came to us for the time she did. She's taught us a lot, and we'll. We'll keep the communication open, and she's definitely going to help us with this transition, and she'll be on, still on until July fourteenth, and. I know she'll help us. She's not, she said she won't change her phone number.
For today, we got a big hit. We got thirty-one years, twenty years, Nicole.
Yep. And then we had one donation um, for the Gallup, LaHeim from Galt donated one hundred dollars. Towards the Galt Horse Assisted Learning and Enrichment Program Gallup. Very timely as we're. Possibly getting that going next year with some retirees.
Alright, now. Can I get a uh, motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Annette, I get a second?
I can second that.
Scotty?
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Kuncy to approve item number two-one-two-four-six-one, the consent calendar, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Now we'll move to two-one-two-point-four-six-three, the board consideration of approval. For the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four L cap.
Alright, thank you. So last night, we had our public hearing, um, our, our special board meeting for the L cap review and also for the adopted budget review. I wanted to highlight the way that we have received or solicited feedback for our L cap. It has been posted on our website for. Least a few weeks, almost maybe a month now. We've asked the community to provide feedback through our posting on our website, notified through email. Um, text through our blackboard system, and also through our district monthly newsletters as well. Trustee Catherine Harper invited the feedback from the community by posting it in the Galt Herald. And so what I wanted to share with you, um, I'm not going to, we're not going to, yesterday as a team, we went over the L cap for probably a good hour. But I did want to share with you tonight again, and, and for the community that might be on, um, the feedback that we received. We. Of course, received lots of feedback through our educational partners, DAC and D-LAC, and, and our special, um, PAC, Special Education Committee. And our staff and, and, and parents throughout the year, but through this open session, we had four questions. And um, one open-ended question, a total of five questions, and we had five community members, five educational partners that did respond to us, and so that was, I'm sorry, not five, we had nine. We had nine. Last year, we had zero. So this is improvement. During the L cap open session, we had nine. So there's a summary for you. I just want to make sure that publicly we, we talk about that feedback. The first question was, what is key to supporting student engagement and academic growth? The response arts programs that came up a lot, instructional assistance to support the classroom, make learning fun, connections and daily life experiences. Increase parent and teacher communication, smaller class sizes, and encourage students to ask questions and ask for help when needed. Number two was, what is key to supporting staff growth and motivation? Increase salaries for staff, again, increase parent-teacher communication, smaller class sizes. Goal-setting and celebrating accomplishments, increased appreciation from parents towards our staff. And administration setting high educational standards and expectations. Number three, what is key to improving student attendance? Um, feedback said supportive learning environments, again, arts. Make learning fun again, building relationships between teachers and students. And weekly, monthly, quarterly prizes for students, which we, we, our sites do a good job with, with that. Number four, what is key to improving school safety? Increase neighborhood officers present during key times of the day, more adults, more eyes on campus. Keep doing what you're doing, your gates, your sign-in, sign-out system, keep your gates locked. Increased education on dangerous situations. Secure the front school, the front office. And hold identification of visitors and return, make, and get them to return to the office, and so. Something that we've kind of brainstormed what we might consider next year. Um, instead of holding their identification, their driver's license. When we have visitors check in in the office, instead of giving them a sticker. We're considering giving them a lanyard with a badge like we do for our substitute teachers. So with the thoughts of that, maybe if you have that lanyard around your neck, you might remember to go back through the office to check out. So that's something might be kind of a, a bridge before we, we start taking identification cards or holding them. Um, open-ended, please add any other feedback, um, have school resource, or resource officers engage with students, which they did. They. Started the Character Counts program again this year, which is very well-received by our, our students. And then partner with the P D, the Sac Sheriff's Department, Fish and Game, et cetera, to engage um, students to increase more. And then partner with the PD, the SAC Sheriff's Department, Fish and Game, et cetera, to engage, um, students to increase more positive influence. From our, our officers or our, um, employees in uniform. And so we have not, well, let's check, let's see if we have, we, do we have any comments on our LCAP?
We do not have any requests for public comment.
Okay, so we're definitely open to answer any other questions that the board might have about the LCAP.
Do you have any, uh? Questions? And none? Can I get a motion to approve?
The motion to approve two, one, two point four, six, three.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two, one, two, four, six, three, seconded by Wesley Cagle, Annette Coonsey. Catherine Harper. Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to the two, one, two point four, six, four, uh, more consideration approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Similar to the LCAP, we went over the budget in detail at the public hearing yesterday and also presented the PowerPoint. Does the board have any additional questions that I can answer? And why is there any public comment tonight for that?
There are no requests for public comment.
That's, um, we'll conclude what I have for you.
Uh, any, uh, questions?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the walkthrough yesterday. That was super helpful and really appreciate breaking it down for us. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, uh, both reports, the time and effort put into it, it's deeply much appreciated. And the time we spent yesterday, like Annette said, was much appreciated.
Yeah, I want to thank the staff. It really is a collective. Venture to get that LCAP done and, and with the budget as well with the fiscal team to, to get the budget to adoption.
Whoever's coming in your spots got big shoes to fill. So, okay, can I get a motion for the budget for next year?
I'll make the motion to approve two and two point four, six, four.
Thank you, Catherine. Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, one, two, four, six, four, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Cagle. Annette Coonsey. Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Okay, moving on. Two, one, two point four, six, five, board consideration approval of res- resolution number fourteen. Resolution of the governing board to commit fund balance for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So this was new last year. When the governor has a certain amount of money in the public school system stabilization account. It triggers our unassigned amount to be capped at ten percent. Last night when we went over the NYPD, we had kind of pointed that out. Part of that is adopting a resolution on what you're going to commit your funds to. And each year that it's triggered, you bring back the resolution, uh, with updated dates and potentially updated commitments. During the, uh, year, you have the ability to take action to change what you're committing your funds for. So the board still has, um, direction on these, uh, funds. And so that's all this is tonight is just the resolution that, uh, designates committed funds to technology. Uh, future technology upgrades, techs, adoptions and facility needs.
Thank you for that information. Anybody have any? Yeah, I get a motion for, uh, two, one, two point four, six, five.
I'll make the motion to approve two, one, two point four, six, five.
I'll second.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to approve item number two, one, two, four, six, five, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Cagle. Tracy Skinner. Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Move on down to two, one, two point four, six, six, board consideration approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four Education Protection Act. Use of funds.
So the EPA fund was created by Prop thirty and then amended by Prop fifty-five. And, um, basically it's a, it's a shell game. And so these are taxes that are collected in a separate account that offsets how much the state has to pay us in state aid. So we get the same pot of money. It's just where does the pieces come from? And you're only allowed to, um, spend this on instructional, you can't spend it on administrative costs. And so each year, uh, we have to bring to the board what we're spending it on and we choose to just spend it on teachers. And so funds are just moved over to this budget, um, for teacher cost.
Thank you for that information. Anybody have any questions? And then, you know, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. Two, one, two point four, six, six.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cagle to approve item number two, one, two, four, six, six, seconded by Annette Coonsey, Tracy Skinner. Catherine Harper. Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Moving on to one, two point four, six, seven, board consideration of approval of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four expulsion panel.
Okay, thank you. Um, whenever a student is recommended for expulsion by a school. It, um, they legally have a right to an expulsion hearing before a panel. Um, ed code states that the expulsion hearing may be heard by the board. Or the board may appoint a panel of administrators to act in that capacity. So annual, annually, we bring to your board, um, to the board, our panel of administrators. I, I, I would like to say that in my nine years as, um, Ed Services Director. Um, all the background and the work that our, um, schools have done when we have had an expulsion case. It's the parents have never, families have never come to a hearing. They've, um, always been in agreement and then it's come directly to the school board. But in the case that they were to ask for a hearing, but I'd like to ask for your approval of our administrative panel for the next school year.
Thank you for that. Um, any questions?
I just had a logistical question. So if there were a hearing, do, does, do all of these attend or just if it's a particular school? They attend with the rest of the members?
Help me out because is it just two? I think it's been probably fifteen years since I've been on an expulsion panel. Is it just two?
I served on an expulsion panel a couple of times as a principal. Um, I think there were two of us and then the, the admin that recommended the expulsion is there and presents the case. And the parents and the student, and then the families dismissed. The, the expulsion panel deliberates and then a decision is written, is made. And then that decision goes to the board.
But when we meet with the families, that's the, the very first thing, we, we let them know of their legal right to a hearing. If they do dispute the facts.
Way back in the day when I was in Estralita, I was on the expulsion panel.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve? Your panel.
Make the motion to approve one, two, one, four, six, seven.
Awesome. Thank you, Tracy. I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two, one, two, four, six, seven, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Cagle. Annette Coonsey. Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
On a two, one, two point four, six, eight, more consideration of approval of declaration of need. For fully qualified educators for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you. Whenever there's a shortage of fully credentialed teachers, the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. Requires school districts to file a declaration of need. The declaration of need provides the district with flexibility and with options to fill vacancies. A declaration of nee- of need must be presented to the board for approval every year. This declaration of need that you have in front of you includes eleven interns. As well as one single subject teacher in the area of physical education. And as well as one CLAD emergency permit, the CLAD is the English Language Authorization. That teacher came to us from out of state. So with that, uh, board approval is recommended.
So eleven interns, one PE and one CLAD. Alrighty. Are there many, any other questions? That, okay, seeing that, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve two, one, two point four, six, eight.
Thank you, Catherine. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, one, two, four, six, eight, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Cagle. Annette Coonsey. Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Okay, moving on to two, one, two point four, six, nine, board consideration of approval. The two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Single Plan for Student Achievement for the seven schools.
Wonderful. The single plans for, uh, student achievement reflect the site-based implementation of look, of the LCAP. And, um, the SIPSA plans have been updated to align with the two LCAP goals. And the SIP says, this is, I believe, the third year we are on the same, same cycle as the LCAP. And, um, I think it's really important to bring out that it's a living document. So what, uh, what the, what the, um, school site councils have worked with the principals. Um, to come up with in the document and signed off on it in the fall, their budgets will be updated. They, um, when they do have additional, um, expenditures or ideas of for, if we're spending the funds. It goes through the school site council. The school site council will, um, vote on it. The SIPSA com- components are the needs assessment, the, um, educational partner involvement, the resource inequities, if any. The, it contains the performance data that you see in there comes from CDE. So that's downloaded from, um, from CDE. And then the principals work with their school site councils, um, to develop the goals, strategies, and then the proposed expenditures. Um, Fair Site is new to the SIPSA, um, process this year. And they, they have a smaller SIPSA because much of the, of the performance data you're not going to see. On a, um, transitional kindergarten program. But, um, and then the last page of the SIPSA are the school site council memberships and it's the signature pages. What I'd like to do is turn it over to our principals and ask them just to briefly share one to two highlights from each of their SIPSES. And then if you have any questions for them afterwards, and we'll start at, at this end and. We'll go around and then we'll go to the back.
I just wanted to highlight, um, the parent surveys that we received, um, in the spring when we did the Cal School surveys. And, um, kind of the benchmark is about fifty percent scoring at the strongly agree. But our parent, um, surveys were just overwhelmingly positive. Um, really our parents feeling that, um, their involvement was very meaningful in the activities that we had planned. And they felt that their, um, the school environment was very conducive to motivating, uh, their children to learn. Commu- and even though I'd shared before about the communication, but during this survey, our parents did feel like they had received adequate communication. In addition, the staff survey was positive. It was the strongly agree, agree categories. We were scoring in the nineties percentiles across different domains. So very, um, positive reporting by parents and staff. And, um, and I think it really just highlights, um, the parent engagement activities that we do have at Fair Site. We really do value parents as being our children's first teachers. And so we have put into place multiple opportunities for parents to be involved, whether they're, uh, literacy nights, math nights. Also, we have academic parent team meetings during the day as well. And so, uh, lots of opportunities for our parents to be involved. And so it didn't surprise us that our scores were so high in terms of how parents are receiving it. Um, additionally, I just wanted just to kind of point out, um, some of the funding that we've kind of allocated for next year. Also is towards kind of developing those oral language vocabulary skills. Really wanting our staff to be trained on some strategies that, um, promote language development. That's, uh, Claudia mentioned earlier, reading by third grade is, is critical. And what we do at Fair Site is really lay those foundational skills around, uh, uh, language development.
Thank you, River Oaks Principal Hamdus.
Good evening. A few things stuck out to me as I was reviewing our results. Coming to River Oaks is my first year. Um, I was able to kind of see what was from last year and coming from the middle school. One of the things that was really important to me was that parents were connected on ParentView. I hit that pretty hard with my staff at the beginning and in back to school night as well with the parents. And I saw that that was one of the higher rates of parents util- using ParentView. Um, it increased from in the thirtieth percentile to seventy-something percentile. So it was a huge increase for us of just parents accessing their child's information, which was great. Um, other things we took away from the Cal School survey involved, um, the parents feeling involved, that increased by twenty percent. As well as feeling that their children, their teachers respond to their child's social emotional needs. That was almost a twenty percent spike as well. So I am so thrilled with that. Um, the other thing that stuck out was our students, um, they feel it, feel safe at school. That also was on the rise from fifth and sixth grade from the previous year. And talking with what Donna had shared, um, staff felt last year, I think I have it. Yeah, staff last year felt student depression was at a rate of fifty-five percent. Now that's their perception. Um, now this year it's down to twenty-six percent. So that's a number we wanted to drop and we're glad to see that. So lots of positive things, lots of, lots of learning and lots of growth.
Thank you. Principal Simonich at Greer.
Okay, one of the things that, um, I think I'm so proud of our staff and the hard work we did this year. That's reflected in our dat- our data and LCAP goal. Number two, um, for social emotional learning is our work with CalHope. We have a two-year grant, um, we spent about twenty thousand dollars this year. Um, supporting student engagement and, um. Boy, lots of, lots of supports we put into the classroom in order to create equitable learning spaces. Um, some of the skills that we're teaching children and adults as well, are, uh, self-awareness and self-management. Um, social awareness and, um, relationship skills. And, um, hoping to see that, um, those skills translate into, um, you know, learner growth and achievement. And not only social emotional areas, but academic areas as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Principal Porter, Marengo Ranch Elementary.
One of the things that you'll see in the SIPSA, um, in the California dashboard are, um, indicators that look at performance. Um, it's based on last year's data for S-PAC and attendance and things like that. One of our indicators is very high, but unfortunately it's chronic absenteeism. Um, it's listing it as forty-eight point nine percent from last year. But when you look at how we actually did this year, it was down to thirty-one percent. So it's a big jump from what we were seeing in the past year. Um, it's a far cry from our twenty nineteen data, which was only six point two percent for chronic absenteeism. So we have a long way to go to get back to where we were. But, um, we give out a lot of, um, incentives for attendance. Whether it's, uh, a drawing at a Friday sing for a squishmallow. Or, um, certificates and gift cards for In-N-Out Burger each trimester. And we had Jamba Juice gift cards that were donated by our local Jamba Juice, which was fantastic. Um, so we're doing a lot, um, and we're seeing a lot of growth with our attendance in terms of kids coming to school. I think the one thing that really, um, caught my attention was the number of intermediate students. That were recognized for the honor roll assemblies for, um, the third trimester. There were a lot of kids in fourth, fifth and sixth grade that earned perfect attendance. We didn't see it as much with primary, but I think there were thirty-something sixth graders that got it for that third trimester. Um, the sixth grade teachers had a lot of really engaging things that were happening at the end of the year and the kids were coming to school. So, uh, that's an area that we're going to continue to work on for next year.
Thank you. Principal Castillo, McCaffrey Middle School.
So one of the highlights that I like to point out is one of the things that students really struggle with was in math. Um, so in our map, we can see that we increased by eight, uh, by eight points within last year, this year. And I had to contribute that to the math teachers and the goals that were set by the district. They really highlighted that portion of it and they put a lot of efforts to look at the map data from last year and start targeting and provide some more one-on-one instruction and really start focusing on different strategies to help achieve that. So we're able to move from a thirty-five, I believe, to a forty-three percent. So that is a huge growth when dealing with math. We stayed the same in ELA and the maps course. We did provide a lot of incentives for the kids and it was very simple. And that was zero cost because all we did to highlight that and motivate them is use your cell phone during lunches. And that is actually the cheapest motivation that it really helped out for our students. And at the same time, what we did is we had the high school counselors, we would collaboratively with them and did a video with me to indicate the importance of their testing. Some middle schools don't understand that their testing plays a critical role in where their placement is for next for high school. So they, they just kind of sometimes don't understand that it goes hand in hand. So by them seeing that and the questions that did arise was, whoa, I didn't think the tests were that important. I didn't think that had an impact on, on what we had to do. And another thing, as we sat down, as well as Ms. Najjar, who was with us this past year, and as well as my current vice principal, we sat down and Ms. Porter also mentioned is chronic absenteeism. And that is a huge thing, not just in Galt, but across the nation is absenteeism. So one of the things that we're trying to look at is allocating funding to do hire and put somebody who would actually be able to identify kids who are starting to fall behind. And we look and analyze their attendance before we go through the SAR, before we go through the SARB and do really find out what is actually happening with the students prior to getting to that level. Is it anxiety? Is it not being connected to school? Providing those resources to the families and as well as we look at, we have a high socioeconomic rate. It could be duly identified. Our EL students as well, they could be socioeconomic disadvantaged as well. It could be possibly our sped kids. So it's to be able to catch them before they go into that and fall further behind. And as a student, once you fall further behind, it's very difficult to come back to school and say, huh, what am I doing? How can I get connected back? When they're barely starting to find out their first percentage. So hopefully this pilot program will have some positive impact and as well as educator parents on the importance and showing some empathy from our staff rather than just saying, I'm glad you're back. Rather than say, well, we haven't seen you, but changing that philosophy is, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're back on campus. I'm glad to see you.
Thank you. Principal Nelson, Valley Oaks Elementary. Oh, that's true. Why not?
Hey, the price for sitting in a bag.
Yeah.
Oh, man. It was all laid out perfectly. All right, I'm gonna talk about a theme from our SIPSA from Valley Oaks. And I'm going to refer to pages. Don't necessarily think that everybody has to look at the pages. But part of the reason why is to kind of show how the SIPSA, or at least how we use the information in the SIPSA. On page thirteen of, of our SIPSA, it talks about our English learner enrollment. So at Valley Oaks, we have about fifty percent of our students who are English learners. On that same page, it also lists our reclassified fluent English proficient students, which we typically use the acronym RFEP, RFEP. What it takes for an English learner to become reclassified basically means a understanding English enough that they can, they don't need extra classes and things like that. But what they need to do is show competency through their coursework, but also through a test that they take annually called the LPAC. And then also competency in the Sback, which is the yearly test that they take. So in looking at the data that is presented in here on page twenty-seven and twenty-nine, it shows how our students who are reclassified have performed on the Sback. And the conclusion on page twenty-seven, and this is about English Language Arts, is that our reclassified English learners or RFEP students, they're the highest scoring student group out of all the student groups. That means out of, man, all of them, right? So we've got English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged, white, Hispanic. But the, the group that scores the highest on Language Arts is our RFEP students. If you look at page twenty-nine, it talks about math similarly. And the student group that scores the highest in math is also our reclassified English learner group, RFEP. So we see that there is a correlation between having that designation or reclassification and performance. And so we look at then, what is it that those students need to do in order to become reclassified? And when, when we look at the data that is shown on pages nineteen and twenty from the LPAC, we see that, and this is not atypical, it's actually very typical, that our students typically perform well on the bottom of page nineteen, the last column or the last, the last little box in the listening domain and in the speaking domain, listening and speaking tend to do better in English. The two areas that they don't do as well in is reading and writing. So if we want to get students reclassified, we know we need to focus on reading and writing because those are their lower, lower areas. So then we look at, okay, so we have to come up with some actions or strategies to get them to perform better in those areas. So on pages forty-one and forty-six, there are two different strategies or actions that we talk about. And one of them is the importance of ELD instruction. That's that thirty-minute portion of the day where our English learners receive instructions specifically related to improving their English skills. And in this case, with the focus on reading and writing, because those are the, they're two areas of weakness. On page forty-six, we also introduce another strategy that specifically focuses on, on reading. And in particular, one of the strategies that, that we use to increase reading practice, we know that just like with anything else, you don't get better at something unless you practice at it. We talk about this with students all the time. So students need to practice reading. And one of the things that we use to gauge that is, is accelerated reader. And it's not in the SIPSA, but what we've found is that when students do read, when they meet their goals, they have trimester goals. So students who meet all three trimester goals, close to fifty percent of them score at or above a benchmark on the Sback. And if we want to go even further, students who read a million words or more, which is a lot, but we need to lot, we need to practice a lot. Those students who read a million words or more, close to seventy-eight percent of them score three or four on Sback. So just, you know, what I want to share is, is that we have a lot of English learners at, at Valley Oaks and we want to get them all reclassified. We know that once they become reclassified, they do really well. So how do we get them reclassified? We focus on, on certain things, especially reading and writing. So that's what I wanted to share with you guys, jumping through the, the SIPSA a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you. Principal Hayes, Lake Canyon Elementary School.
Good evening. And the highlight from my Lake Canyon SIPSA, actually, I want to reflect back to the discussion earlier this evening when Cleo was presenting data. We talked about the fact that we know each and every learner. And I really can tell you that that's what the pages of my SIPSA, I'm sure everyone else's SIPSA's really tell the story of, of how that happens. And we each have unique ways and campus cultures and climates that we approach that. And a few excerpts from Lake Canyon and the way that we work hard as a, as a team of educators and staff to personalize the learning of each and every one of our students is through creating a climate and culture that really is rich with opportunities for them to be successful and to learn and grow in alignment with the LCAP goals. And so some, some really neat things that we saw this year where just, we're just like everyone else highlighted, great increases in our student and parent survey results. We had metrics that increased fifteen and twenty points from last year. And so we know that in areas such as student academic motivation, which increased, I think about fifteen points from last year, school connectedness with, well, connect, student connectedness with the school community increased about fifteen points. Meaningful participation was a huge metric increase. And also the fact that students are feeling safe at school, we had a huge increase along with all of the metrics on the parent survey increased for the positive for us. Another way that we personalize the learning of our students is through the provision of our multi-tiered systems of supports for students that need added acceleration or intervention. And we have an MTSS team that's comprised of specialists and master teachers that comes together about once a month. And we provide personalized pathways with added supports and action plans specifically created for those students that include additional access to intervention or acceleration opportunities. Plus, I've stood here before and been able to share about the many opportunities that we have at Lake Canyon through campus clubs and field trips and interactions with a wide variety of community partners that just again, create those meaningful opportunities. And you'll see all of those things highlighted in the Lake Canyon SIPSA. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Principals, for, it was so varied, wasn't it? I was wonderful, just the different areas that you selected to highlight. Appreciate that. Thank you. Questions?
I just had two comments. One, sort of observing and going to some of the school sites, I think, and you see it in the SIPSES, is like there's three, three things is like the caring, the tradition, and that self-responsibility, not only for academics, but really, and, and also behaviors. Like you see that in the little things that are all over the school and you heard it tonight too. So just wanted to say that was great. And, you know, I, I really appreciate that for our community and our children. The other thing I wanted to say was sort of going back to what was talked about earlier with the reading and the absenteeism. And, and you at the very early stages with those connections and communication seems like a wonderful opportunity to really reinforce those early habits on the attending school and being there and, and sort of starting those habits early. I think this would be a great opportunity as well, which you may already be doing, but just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Principals, for sharing. We appreciate it. And I get a motion for two one two point four six nine.
I'll make the motion to approve two and two point four six nine.
Thank you, Annette. Tracy in second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to approve item number two one two four six nine, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Moving on, two one two point four seven zero, board consideration approval. Public notice from the elementary district to the CSEA.
Yes, I'll do that. And just before I even move on to this, just wanted to thank the Principals for all your hard work on the SIPSES and great job sharing the highlights for your schools tonight. So. So yes, this was brought to the board for the first time for public notice last month. It was just a notice at that time. This, these are the articles that the district management would like to negotiate with CSEA. There are classified union this year, articles related to leaves, layoff and reemployment, fringe benefits and wages. And so now this would be an action item and then we would be able to start negotiating. We're scheduled to start with CSEA in September.
Thank you. Is any questions on the, on the bargaining part? Seeing none? And, you know, I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve two one two point four seven zero.
Second, the two one two point four seven zero.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number two one two four seven zero, seconded by Catherine Harper, Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Annette Coonsey.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Moving on to two one two point four seven one. Board consideration approval of memorandum of understanding between the CSEA and the elementary district regarding contract language changes to the following articles.
So this is related to negotiations with our classified union this last school year, twenty-two, twenty-three. There's a, quite a few articles, the contract was open last year. And so we were able to negotiate more than just the, the two plus wages. We negotiated employee performance evaluations, transfers, transportation, duration, food and nutrition, absences, vacancy procedures, and the shoe stipend. And so what we have for you are the attachments of all of these articles. And we have red and red for you, contract changes. Anything that is bold is language that was added. And anything that is a strike through, that was current language that we agreed to, to remove. And so we have that for each of the articles. CSEA has ratified this. They have already approved, membership approved the changes. And so if the board were to approve these changes tonight, they would become permanent contract language with our classified staff. Have you had any questions on any specific articles or rationale for any of the changes?
No. Good.
Most of it's pretty straightforward. Some of it's cleanup language. Some of it's just clarifying our procedures for hiring when we have vacancies.
Is there any questions? Nope. Okay, can I get a motion? For two one two point four seven one?
I'll make the motion for two one two point four seven one.
I'll second.
And Annette seconded. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two one two four seven one, seconded by Annette Coonsey, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Okay, moving on, two one two point four seven two. Board consideration approval of resolution thirteen. Resolution of the governing board authorizing absences for participation in religious exercises or instruction.
Thank you. On the, on the next agenda item, it's the second reading or the approval of some updates to board policies and admin regulations. And one of them is BPAR fifty-one thirteen on absences as excuses. And this, the policy for excusing absences for religious exercises or instruction, it's actually been in our handbook over the past few years. But we didn't realize until we were reviewing the updates to the board policy on excuses and absences that the board needed to approve a resolution before that they're able to approve the board policy. And so we're bringing this to you in advance. And we have been following the policy for the past few years. I did, there was one typo when it talked about students must also attend the religious exercise or instruction for at least the minimum school day and not be absent for this purpose on more than four days of school a month. It said it, four days of preschool a month. But actually preschool is not required for attendance. So it says that no more than four days a month. So approval, board approval is recommended.
Any questions? Now, break forward. All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve two one two point four seven two.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to approve item number two one two four seven two, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
And then two one two point four seven three, board consideration of approval of the following board policies, administrative regulations and bylaws.
All right, thank you. So last month was the first reading for the following board policies and ARs. Donna and myself highlighted the changes. And at that time, there were no recommended changes from the And at that time, there were no recommended changes from the board. But we did do a little research and found out the option that we needed to take for the summer learning program, that last BP six one seven seven. So Donna, I just want to highlight the option that we were required because we are, we accept expanded learning funds.
That's it. Because we do accept the expanded learning opportunity program funds. We did select the option that states the superintendent shall establish summer school classes pursuant to ED code forty-six one twenty. And those summer school classes, as I kind of stated earlier, in the absence of the one-time funds we're using for our regular summer school would mean that in future summer, students attending the summer gel program, they would also include that academic, some intervention could look at teacher tutors or small group intervention. But we are required to add, to offer an academic component to the summer program.
Okay. Is there any questions? No, no questions. Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve two one twelve point four seven three. Let me get a second.
I'll second.
All right. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number two one two four seven three, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Annette Kunsy.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Are there any other public comments?
No, there are no requests for public comment.
Pending engine items will be the
Update on the, the survey.
Yeah, the survey and then the the plan.
Yes.
Facilities plan.
I'm pretty sure, have to go out for an RFP for that one too. I'll, I'll look into that for, look into that a little bit. But yes, definitely have a report back on next steps for that.
Is there any other pending engine items where the board might be interested in? Having? Seeing none? Okay, we are adjourned.
All right. Thank you.